There any amendments since you sent this out?
Nan, could you help me sort of see everyone? Okay. I figured that way. That would just be, well, they're still not showing me everyone, is it?
No, partly because you have this up there too.
But you know if I share a screen Dana, you're not going to be able to see everything.
The one I identified from you should be okay. Yeah. And so, and I won't really be able to watch.
I think unless there's anything particular we have to look at on the screen, I wouldn't.
Don't share the screen with you.
That way they can see each other better, yeah. Look at people's faces. So is it going whoever's talking, do they go to them?
Well, if you see on your thing, it's a little yellow.
So, do I have to put, do this arrow for the star? Or is it just a little?
Well, when you look at it, yeah, it's going.
On your computer.
Okay, then start it.
Do you want to change screens to see everyone?
There's, there's that option to scroll through is if I miss only screens on there. From my experience, you know, I don't use your like two times now, but.
Yeah, so like gallery view, it shows more, but then there's like three pages.
Right, so you can't see everybody.
I was noticing that, but someone shared a screenshot of the legislature being invited. For some reason Steve Harshman was like behind his background, which made me think that like, okay, he's got to be those are people because his skin was green and it melted in the background. But, but yeah, there's like, there was like three different little dots where you scroll through the gallery.
Yes. So when we. See, this is showing here.
So Nan, when we, I call it the order, can you, are you willing to go through there? You're the administrator, right? Just say out loud who's on the call. Can you use that for me? And then that way we can show that we've established a quorum.
Okay, um, yeah, but we need to get this figured out though first.
What are you trying to figure out?
Well, we did a practice YouTube earlier.
Oh, you did YouTube to go?
Yeah. I think as soon as we start this new one, or did you already start?
Stay in this live, live on YouTube. And then I can stop view stream on YouTube or copy streaming link. See when I press this. It just comes up the older.
Okay. So can we start the meeting or you guys did that?
Well, we gotta get this figured out first because it'll have to be live.
It's working on YouTube.
It's working on YouTube?
Yeah, but what's, what's it showing?
It, it's showing everybody's face that has the video on it.
Okay, so we're ready to go then?
I think so.
All right, why don't you text me if something goes wrong?
That's what I can say, just chime in if there's an issue.
I, I will, I got the YouTube link on my phone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. I need, so it's four o'clock, I'll call this regularly scheduled Carvin County School District number two board trustees meeting to order. I asked Nan if she would kind of do a roll call to see who's on so that we can show that we've established a quorum for meeting. And the action's taken.
We have Cassie Westring.
Here.
Alameda. Joe Gaspari.
Here.
Karen Connet.
Here.
Mike Gordman.
Here.
Charlie George.
Here.
Georgia Miller.
Here.
James Sewell.
Here.
Paul Clark.
Everybody chose the.
He just said here, yes.
Thank you. All right, we're here. Uh, or somewhere that we're connected, so, um, first pledge of allegiance, if you'll please join me with that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, uh, this might take a little practice, um, but you know, if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the agenda in a second, that'd be great. Okay, we've been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, uh, and we need to do a roll call vote, is that correct?
Yes, so anything that needs to be done.
Yeah. All in favor, in person, so James says aye, Georgia.
Aye.
Aye.
Cassie.
Hi.
Casey.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Karen.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Thank you. Smooth. Okay, obviously with a shortened agenda, we do not have any presentations at this time, no correspondence at this time. So we will move into section five resignations and hiring, item A.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, accept the resignation of Johnny Mercer effective at the end of the 2019-2020 school year, thanking for his dedicated service.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the resignation from Johnny Mercer effective the end of the 2019-2020 school year, and thank him for his time here in the district and dedicated service. All in favor, I will say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Item B.
Consider offering a contract to Deborah McCully for the 2021 school year, her current assignment will be Hannah Elementary Title One reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we offer a contract to Deborah McCully for the 2021 school year, current assignment will be Hannah Elementary School Title One reading.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to offer a contract for Deborah McCully from the 2020-2021 school year. Current assignment being Hannah Elementary School Title One reading, and from the notes it sounded like she had some good experience, but yes, already. All right, all in favor, I will say aye.
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 Maybe it would work better if we do it the same way, that, that's okay, we'll carry that, but Nanette, Nanette, the other ones, Nanette will ask you. To, so we have a roll call, some of them came kind of at the same time. Okay, item C.
It's consider hiring or offering contracts Nicole Schneider for the 2020-21 school year pending certification, her current assignment will be fifth grade teacher at Saratoga Elementary School.
Mr. Chairman, I move we, we offer a contract to Nicole Schneider for the 2020-2021 school year pending certification for the fifth grade SES teacher.
Second.
Uh, okay, thank you. It has been moved and seconded to offer Nicole Schneider contract for the 2020-2021 school year pending certification, current assignment will be fifth grade at the Saratoga Elementary School. Uh, I vote in favor.
Aye.
Uh, Cassie.
Who, who'd you call?
Cassie, you.
Just vote aye.
Aye or nay, do you vote in favor?
Cassie.
Aye.
Casey.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
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 Charlie.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, item B.
Uh, recommending that the board offer a contract to Anthony Hudson for the 2020-2021 school year, his current assignment will be special education at Hannah Elementary School. This will fill that one position that's been vacant all year.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, offer a contract to Anthony Hudson for the 2021 school year, current assignment will be special ed at the Hannah Elementary.
Second.
Thanks, Charlie. It has been moved and seconded, uh, to offer a contract to Anthony Hudson for the 2020-2021 school year. Uh, current assignment will be special ed at Hannah Elementary School, and I think we're all happy that we found a special ed and a Title One reading specialist there. That we've been missing for the last year. So, all in favor, myself, I will vote aye.
Aye.
Cassie.
Hi.
Casey.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Karen.
Aye.
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 Charlie.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, item E. Item E is to, uh, we're recommending that the board offer a contract to Catherine Bunson for the 2020-2021 school year pending certification. Her current assignment will be FACS teacher at Encampment in Saratoga, three periods at each campus, and she is the current student teacher under Cheryl Monroe right now.
Mr. Chairman, I move we offer a contract to Catherine Bunson for the 2020-2021 school year pending certification, current assignment FACS teacher at Encampment in Saratoga.
And.
Thanks, Cassie. Um, it has been moved and seconded to offer a contract for Catherine Bunson for the 2020-2021 school year pending certification, current assignment being that FACS teacher split for Encampment in Saratoga Middle High School. I vote in favor of that.
Aye.
Cassie.
Hi.
Casey.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Karen.
Hi.
Mike.
Aye.
Charlie.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Okay, item M.
Yes, we're recommending the contract we offered to Daniel Greenwood for the 2021-2020-2021 school year pending certification, current assignment will be science teacher at Encampment K-12. He actually was a local applicant and actually is a graduate of Encampment High School.
Mr. Chairman, I move we offer a contract to Dan Greenwood for the 2020-2021 school year pending certification, current assignment, science teacher at Encampment K-12.
Second.
Thanks, Paul. Um, it has been moved and seconded to offer a contract to Daniel Greenwood for the 2020-2021 school year pending certification, current assignment being the science teacher at Encampment. All who's in favor, I will vote aye.
Aye.
Cassie.
Hi.
Casey.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Karen.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
All right, finally, item G.
We're recommending the board offer a contract to Tyra Relford for the 2021 school year pending certification, her current assignment will be English teacher at Saratoga Middle High School. Uh, Tyra's the current student teacher for Leslie McClinskey at Encampment this year, so she is known.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we offer a contract to Tyra Relford for the 2020-21 school year pending certification, her.
She said it all, she just.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to offer to contract for Tyra Relford for the 2020-21 school year pending certification, current assignment being the English teacher at Saratoga Middle High School. I will vote in favor.
Aye.
Cassie.
Hi.
Casey.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Karen.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Charlie.
Hi.
Paul.
Aye.
All right, thank you guys. Um, I think it's encouraging that we got a couple of, uh, student teachers to come back, they at least know the district and are local, so. Um, does this fill all of our open positions?
Yes.
Thank you.
As of today.
As of today, all right, yeah, I understand. Item six, administrative reports, Dr. Copeland.
Uh, mine is written and attached, so, uh, I won't go into detail, but I'll be glad to answer questions about anything on that. The only update I have that's not on there is that in our weekly Zoom session from WBE. All districts will get a call from a WBE representative either today or tomorrow, I did not get a call today, so I'm sure I'll get one tomorrow. Uh, basically, this is the two week check-in to see how our adaptive learning plan is going. Uh, also, they will ask the district how it would look if we went back into session for the last couple of weeks, and that's kind of a quote, a couple of weeks. So, that tells me that, uh, and, and they said they would make, the Governor Gordon would make an announcement very soon, which I'm sure will be this week. So that tells me there is some talk about possibly, uh, opening schools up. What I know of, as of today about schools is that Nebraska, South Dakota, Idaho, and Utah have all closed schools for the year, either by order or recommendation. Have not heard from Montana or Colorado, those are the only two bordering states we have not heard of. Governor Gordon said he would coordinate with border, the bordering states, the last meeting that he spoke, which was last week. But that does tell me that they're considering opening some things back up, and it may include schools, so. If that takes place, and if they leave it up district by district, uh, they did say that Sweet One or Two, which would be Green Rivers Board, decided or made the decision Friday to close for the remainder of the academic year. So if they open it up where districts can decide individually, we may have a special meeting just to endorse either a plan and how that would look to open that up for the rest of the year. Or to make the other decision that we're not going to open up the rest of the year, so. Uh, I will certainly communicate as soon as possible. Any information by email or text today, tonight, or tomorrow, so. Just thought I would throw that information in, and, uh, we'll see. We do, I would make the point that there is not a publicly confirmed case in our school district that we know of. So, I mean. That's a factor, I suppose.
Okay, well, we'll know a lot more when we hear from WBE and the Governor, so, great. My point, talking about something that might happen. Uh, do you have anything else in your report that you want to talk about?
You can let me answer questions, but otherwise it's pretty much just what's in there.
All right, does anybody have a specific question to Dr. Copeland? Okay, we will move along. Um, we will have no special ed or principal reports at this time. Um, audience, um, I don't know if you guys all had a chance to, uh, see, there was an email forwarded from Emma Deere's. So I'll just read that. Said, uh, "Good morning Dana, I have a question that may go under the public comment portion of today's school board meeting. I am curious if the board has a plan in place for graduation in the case that school closures will be extended to the end of the academic year, thank you, Emma Deere's, news reporter." Bigfoot 99.
We have talked about options of how that could look, uh, it may be similar at all of our three high schools, it may be different depending on input we get from. Maybe students or parents, uh, I know we've begun to get some input, uh. We were really waiting to see whether we were going to be in session or not, and if we were in session, were they just going to open up schools? And that would be okay to have graduation type? Groups or not, so we're really just waiting for guidance because it's two different, completely different scenarios, if we're open and it's just open, or if we're not. So we have talked about some options, and we will just keep everybody posted. Hopefully, we, if we can just know about whether we're in or out, then we can move forward with various plans.
All right, any other audience questions? And I suppose from the YouTube, and you know, unless somebody emailed in like, Emma, I don't think we're going to answer questions, so. It's nice to see that she did that. Okay, item A, unfinished business, uh, we have no unfinished business at this time. Item nine, um, the disposition of the school-owned land in Medicine Bow, land adjacent to the old Medicine Bow High School, which we've seen some emails on that the last day. Part of the reason this is on the agenda is not necessarily to take action on it, but have a discussion on it and, uh, in a public forum.
So this could be an action out of or not, depending on what the board wants to do, there, it's, the situation is that Med Bow Lodging is not interested in extending or another one-year lease. Mr. Byrne, who represents Veritas, I think that's how you say that, uh, you know, has approached the board probably a couple of years ago initially, and then. We didn't hear from him while, and then they both, they ended up buying the, the old school building from the town of Medicine Bow. They're the ones that are, are his client, is the one that is interested in a purchase. And so, he's reached out again a couple of times recently, so basically, we're just looking for a little guy, or I'm just looking for a little guidance as to we. Want to, want to do something about the land, do we want to sell it, do we want to, uh, he, he's also indicated that would be interested in a short-term lease with an option of purchase. Uh, I sent you all the email that he sent, uh, and also some other information, and so really just a little bit of guidance, so the board could take action to move forward with Mr. McPherson. You know, writing the lease with some conditions, we could say we're just not ready to take any action at this time, or we could say we are not interested in selling the land. So basically, just looking for some direction, and there are some, you know, past issues that people have brought up. Uh, I did invite Mr. Byrne into the meeting, he was going to be in Montana, wasn't sure he could join, he has not, uh, joined the meeting so far, but he. He, if he was very good and had the link, he has been invited, so.
So I would, I guess I would like, um, first of all, Mike and Casey both had shared some emails, Mike, um, I'd like to hear your thoughts for a couple of minutes, and then Casey, your thoughts. And then, uh, if anybody else has anything to say, we'll open it up at that point, but Mike, um, would you mind speaking up, please? Mike Gordman, you still there?
You might need to unplug your headset. Because we can't hear you.
Nobody can hear Mike.
Hear me now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So I can't really hear you off of the, the, the mat or the computer very well, so I had to plug in my headphones and that messed with the audio. So, I mean, I don't think there's really a whole lot to talk about, really, uh, the fact that they haven't paid their taxes is just one issue. Why, uh, is it my understanding, did I hear that right, uh, Med Bow Lodging doesn't plan on renewing their lease with us?
Correct.
Okay. Um. Yeah, so I mean, if we just leave it at that, um. That's, that's kind of, I mean, I, I got a lot of other things to probably say about it, but, um, just. Maybe moving forward, I don't know. There's, there's several issues that I have, so that tax is kind of the big one, and then also, um, just not a huge fan of, uh. Of, of, uh, selling it, leasing could be an option if they can move past the tax point or get that squared away. I know they've, they, the fact that they're not willing to share their, their plan with us, and they're keeping that kind of hidden is kind of one reason. A year or two ago, they didn't really succeed at getting their plans implemented in Medicine Bow to begin with. How to, out, out in the Shirley Basin like they wanted to, um, the commissioners had a kind of an issue with that. Kind of seemed like they're always hiding something, so, uh, the fact that they're just not coming out with, with the information, we need to make a sound decision on whether to sell it to them or not. I mean, does this school really need to sell the land? I, that's kind of my question to the board, or, you know, would we be putting it up for sale if no one was asking us to sell it? So, selling it wouldn't, I'd fight that pretty hard because, you know, it's an industrial operation going into a residential neighborhood in, in the site of Medicine Bow, so. You know, I have issues there, um, so, there's a lot that I can go down and tell you guys, but I'll just leave it at that and let, let the board chime in on, on what else is going on, so. I mean, I think we all kind of maybe feel the same, maybe not.
Thanks, Mike, Casey. Share any of your thoughts?
Yeah, so I've kind of pounded on this tax thing, I think a year-old tax delinquency at $37,000 warrants an eyebrow raise possibly. Now, the other thing is that, um, I taught, I have a lot of friends in this kind of industrial siding process, Char, uh, Charlie and Paul and Cassie might know a little about it. Part of the reason that Berta.
We lost you, Cassie, or Casey. We can't hear you. Casey. Casey.
Might need a waiver down.
Are you there now?
Yes, they all can hear you.
How long did I talk?
We lost you at industrial siding.
Okay, so if you know about the industrial siding process, they need, they need to purchase some land or this building to get a production tax credit on their, you know, project, the little Med Bow wind. And so that's a, I mean, this is just a move so they can show the Industrial Siding Council that they are trying to do something. The huge problem with that is that they're a year late, you know, on their taxes. I don't know what they've done with the Medicine Bow School, but I would suspect that that was just another attempt to appear that they've spent some money on this project and they haven't gotten it in there, so. Personally, myself, I'm against this sale, I'm kind of with Mike, I don't know why we would need to even sell it. If, if it comes up and it's, you know, someone that can tell us what they're going to do with it, not disrupt a residential area, I'm fine with it, but otherwise I would suggest a no to this. And sorry about the speakers.
Paul or Charlie, either of you that are up there, want to say anything?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. There's, there's a couple of issues with Veritas. The taxes is one, the not knowing exactly what they're doing. Medicable Lodging kind of, kind of caught me with my pants down. As most of you know, I've been mood lighting with them and managing their RV park there. The, the only issue I have with any of this right now is that there's, there's ten RVs in there now. Expected to be fifteen. They just let me know about this, so come May fifth or sixth or whenever their lease is up. I'm not sure what to do with these guys that are already in there. If there's a short-term lease available either to Dean Byrne or to if Medicable Lodging would do a short-term, there's no, there's no, nothing in their lease now that will allow them to do a, anything less than a year. So I'd, I'd like to discuss that and see what you guys think on that.
Charlie, do you know if those trailers that are in there, the RVs, have they signed, what kind of agreement do they have with Med Bow Lodging, was it just month-to-month or was it?
Yeah, it's, it's month-to-month, the prob, the problem is, is that they've been calling me since late February looking for a spot. And at this point now in Medicine Bow, there's absolutely nothing left. So these guys are going to have to, you know, they're going to be out on their ear, basically, so. So I'm not, I'm not sure how you guys want to proceed with that, I know it's not your problem. It could be, I guess, if, if the lease isn't renewed, these guys are still there. You know, then what?
Yeah, I think we'd have to kind of, that's why I just titled this disposition of the land, because that allows us to kind of discuss what direction we want to go there, but if Med Bow does not lease or would not even extend month-to-month until we figure a transition, I wish they might, I have not, I just got the email basically today explaining that they were not planning to continue. They had originally sent one last Thursday, got lost in the whole hundreds of emails I get every day. But so today's when I read that email that they sent and basically said that they were not interested because of the COVID and because of just economic situation right now. I'm not proposing that we kick everybody off immediately, May ninth or whatever that end date is, but if there's not another lease on there, then that puts us as landlords and I don't know how that would look, we could, I don't know. That situation.
Wouldn't it be the responsibility of Darren and Med Bow Lodging to clean that up? And get them out of there?
They've given us, you know, that money that's, that's sitting in there in case there needs to be something done once was the lease was over as a protection. They did say in the email, and I'll be glad to share that out with everybody, I, I think I sent it to James, I'm not sure, Sally, I think, maybe, but that I just got today. They did say that they, there might be the possibility of somebody else interested in the, in a lease that would manage, you know, that would just manage it. So we could pursue that, I just haven't had a chance to talk to them since late today when I got the email. So in other words, we would have to just, we would have to kind of figure out a few things and then you know, we, if, if we have a special meeting about opening and closing, we could, we'll always put that on there next week and then just make some kind of decision if we could get something together.
Mike, a follow-up question for you. You know, if, if there were somebody else that came in or, or Med Bow Lodging came back and wanted to do it through the summer, you know, with the limit that we have now, I think it's sixteen units is the max or something to that effect, without growing it, is there any issues with, from your standpoint, on another entity continuing with the people that are basically already there through the summer?
You were talking, asking me, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't believe so. I, I guess that's kind of why I like the year-to-year lease. That, that's unexpected, but yeah, it's been, it's been all right, and I think the, the campers we got back there in, in the situation, yeah, having someone else pick it up and, and carry it through the summer, you know, them guys were out by, like, November last year, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issues there, so. The only issue that we had, that I was going to bring up at a later time, if we were to discuss Med Bow Lodging's lease was just a couple of things that they, they were asked to do in the lease that they didn't maybe necessarily get done, which aren't huge things, but you know, just kind of stress the expectations that we, we want back there. Just, just because you're so close to residential, so there were a few issues last year, but nothing major, so.
Let me, let me clarify something for Mike, what he'd mentioned, the, the industrial business over there, that's actually zoned industrial now, so. You know, the town, the town's zoned that as industrial property, so.
Correct, it, it is industrial now, that's just kind of the issue that I'm starting to learn is the town is just willing to give something industrial at the tip of a hat or whatever, looks good at the time. So I come from two different standpoints. You know, there's that and then being so close to residential, it doesn't, doesn't seem, seem right to always go that route all the time, so. Maybe just a concerned neighbor or concerned citizen or towns person at this point, resident, so.
Real quick, guys, I, I got a question on this. You know, it, it sounds like everybody's is kind of against this versa or versa, or however you say it outfit. But with Med Bow Lodging not renewing their lease, we got some campers out there that would probably be kind of unfairly kicked out without the school board or the school district becoming a landlord. What if there was somebody local, let's say like a Scotty, who has all those RV parks set up over there by the Virginian? If he was to take this lease over until winter, until everybody kind of kicks out, Charlie's been doing a good job keeping an eye on it. At least we give these guys a chance to make a living without, without kicking them out. What's everybody's thoughts on that?
Are you saying, are you suggesting Paul to look into the option of possibly just seeing it, Scotty would want to lease it for some short-term period?
Yeah, yeah, somebody local that we know has some ties to it that can kind of, along with Charlie, take care of it, help it out, then these poor people ain't getting kicked to the curb with no place else to go.
Yeah, and Paul, I asked Mike that question specifically, you know, if he had any issues with other people, you know, obviously if, if Charlie wasn't the board member, he might be a lucky person to do that as well, but he is, and so that's the conflict.
Right, yeah.
And it's okay to take care of it, I think we're, I think that, I don't, I personally don't have a lot of heartburn, I would probably, if you were leasing it from us directly, you know, that's probably not going.
I just think we can't pay a board member.
Right, exactly. So what, before we get to that, real quick, Paul, we'll get there. So basically what we've summarized heard is we, nobody's interested in selling at this point, and if you are, speak up now. Okay, no support for selling at this point, all right. Nobody wants to deal with Veritas at all, even if it's an lease, from what I've heard. If, if you would, if you're interested in even entertaining Veritas as a lease, so, lesee of that property, you can speak up.
The, the only thing I can say about that is, is I don't know legally if we can use their back tax delinquency against them on a different property. It, it's two different, two different properties that they're, they're dealing with.
As one company, but that may be, that may be legally true, but if.
I think it's completely up to the board if they want to sell.
We don't have to approve a lease from anybody, so, I mean, they can request it, so that may be a point. Anybody else think that they want to deal with Veritas? And I'm not saying you're in favor of dealing with it, that's just a point.
I'm, I'm not in favor of, of letting them in any deeper than they are right now in Medicine Bow, so that's where I stand.
Perfect, so nobody is in support of dealing with Veritas in any form or fashion, based on their lack of paying their taxes that they owe the district, and Casey had a great breakdown that they actually owe the district. You know, the district is hurting because they're not paying the debt, so. Is anyone opposed to, if there was another entity that presented something to Dr. Copeland for like a six months or through the summer on the people that are already there and if it's going to expand to sixteen, you know, opposed to him, Dr. Copeland, working on the board's behalf to, you know, entertain a lease from another party so that those people could stay through the summer? Anybody opposed to that? Well, there you go, you have your.
So, so may I, may I ask then, at the end of this lease, how, how fast is this turnover? There, there won't be a, we're not going to have a lapse in there, are we?
Well, the first thing I need to do, Charlie, is to get, if Scotty's the one interested, I mean, I can just approach him or, or I may just call you tomorrow and get a little more information about who may be interested. And it's just a matter of bill drawing out a lease of some term of, you know, we just have to communicate a little bit.
And the other thing is Med Bow Lodging may be interested in a six-month lease, but not a year.
Year to year, you know, month-to-month or something until the season's over, whatever. You know, they might be, I don't know, you know, I guess you probably know better than we do, Charlie.
Well, I, I got the news, I got the news about the same time you guys did, so, no, it's, it's kind of out of the blue for me, so.
All right, I may try to talk to you and them and then we'll go from there tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item number ten, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve consent agenda as presented.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. I vote in favor.
Hi. Cassie?
Hi.
Casey?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Item eleven, financial information. Treasurer's report. Sally is not here.
She's on.
Sorry, Sally.
That's all right, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Um, your balance at the end of March was six million eight hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-one point forty-eight. I'm not going to go through the rest of the details, does anyone have any questions? Any questions on page two? Any questions on the summary reports? That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Bills?
Mr. Chair, I do not have the consent report or the approval form in front of me, so I don't, I can't read the numbers.
Well, all right, we'll get them, Georgia will do it. And just FYI, so what we did this time for the bills committee is we just emailed Sally questions ahead of time and, and copied those of us that are on the bills committee, I, I actually thought that worked pretty good, I, I don't know, but I would be opposed to doing that more often, and it's not coming half an hour early, I don't know.
Okay, so the bills committee recommend these bills, general fund, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Federal funds, seventy-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Major maintenance fund, ten thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Depreciation reserve fund, thirty thousand six hundred seventy-three dollars and forty cents. Hot lunch fund, fourteen thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents. Encament activity account, one thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. H E M H S activity account, four hundred eight dollars and nineteen cents. Saratoga Schools activity account, eight thousand fifty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. For a total of four hundred and three thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in a grand total of four hundred and three thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. I vote yes.
Hi.
Cassie?
Hi.
Casey?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Darby?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, items from the board, we were not going to hear items from the board, but it's, we have time, so I would like to go ahead and do that. If you'll do a roll call, take a little bit of time to do the same order. And that, can you?
Do you want to start or do you want?
No, you start.
Cassie?
Well, I didn't think this was on the agenda, just kidding. I want to congratulate Jason Williams on being coach of the year. And I want to just tell everyone, all the teachers and principals and everyone at central office, just how thankful I am as a board member, but also a parent for everything that everyone's doing for our kids and our students. That's all I have.
Casey?
I'd echo Cassie's comments, Jason did a great job, he's very deserving of that honor. And, you know, thankfully we got to play, that was absolutely amazing. It's been a really easy transition for my kids, this online, so everybody that helped with that, great job. I mean, we don't have any issues with it, the kids have been getting their homework done and still able to be on the ranch, so that's a plus, and everyone stay safe and be well.
Joe?
Okay, I just hit unmute, okay, yes. Congratulations to Jason, and I'd just like to thank Dr. Copeland and all the administration for all the work they've done to continue the education of our children, and I'm really looking forward to the plan for the graduations. So, that's about it.
Karen?
All right, I would like to thank all of the staff of all of the campuses for their dedication to provide education to all of our students, even though they're at home. I'd like to thank the parents who've become kind of teachers and helping their kids out, I know it hasn't been fun, but we're getting through it. I'd like to thank. I'd like to thank the schools for still providing meals for all those kids that need them. I'd like to thank Dr. Copeland and all the principals for getting this all lined out and getting the plan put in place. I'd like to thank Johnny Mercer for his years of service, I'd like to welcome the new hires, hopefully we'll get to meet them in person someday. Congratulations to Jason Williams as the one A Coach of the Year. And I'd like to thank the Irving family who actually donated championship rings to all the boys, even the JV boys, which I thought was pretty darn amazing what a team they are in Saratoga, so, thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, again, thanks, Mr. Copeland, for all your hard work, and then Noel and and all of the admin doing such a great job there with the emails and the communications and relaying all of that information back to teachers. I know my wife's had a pretty good things to say about how fluid things have been in times like this, you know, really probably should be thinking IT a whole lot. They're really probably in there making sure our connections are strong and and probably earning their money right now, so. So really, thank them for all they're doing too, thank, thank you to the board for listening to my comments that that I had sent out about a few things and and really helping me feel a little bit better about things. And thanks to our students for taking on challenges, you know, always ready for it. It's kind of a sad thing about sports, but I know they're they're at home making the best of it and looking forward to next year.
Charlie?
I'm gonna say ditto to everybody's comments, that's the easy part. Dr. Copeland, thank you for for sticking with us and and keeping us on track and through this. All the admin, thank you, and the it's it's kind of strange for the teachers and the the admin to go to school and not have any kids there, so. Thank you to all of those guys, that's about it.
Paul?
Okay, ditto to everything that everybody's been saying, I I think it's testament to all you guys that the admins, the the secretaries, the teachers, everybody that has the investment in these kids' education to actually sometimes even chase these kids down to make sure what they have. It says a lot about you guys, it also says a lot about the teachers to be able to think on their feet and to be able to adapt and turn living rooms into classrooms or closets in the classrooms or garages or whatever we're doing. Very impressive, guys, appreciate it very much.
You guys pretty much hit everything on the head, congratulations to Jason, that's pretty awesome to have a Coach of the Year in the district again. Again, thank you to the admin, Dr. Copeland, all the teachers and students. I just want to remind everyone, kind of especially, you know, parents, that you guys know the struggle that the students are having. Remember that this is only for the teachers too, so there's probably some struggles there, so, you know, kind of keep an open mind if you have any issues. You know, I'm sure if you reached out to them, they'd be willing to help or anyone, you know, would be willing to help if there's some issues out there. We just hope and pray that everything will kind of try to get back to normal. Thankfully, the schools are, you know, doing pretty well and everyone's kind of continuing, obviously, we've got hires and doing all that in in addition to all this COVID stuff, so. Hopefully, we can get back to normal and all of us can be face to face next month.
Sounds good, yeah, thank you, I'm excited about the new hires we have there. Really appreciate, and Andy and the tech stuff, I mean, it's just blows my mind, and the staff, Dr. Copeland, the administrators, all the teachers and the and the parents that are putting up with it. I know for me, you know, this is good reassurance that homeschooling is not the route for my children and my family, so, you know, we all get a little experience of that and that and realize how valuable the schools and and the part they play in the lives of of our community and our people, so, thank you, everybody, I'm glad I added this because I wanted to hear y'all's voice and see a little bit more, have a chance to thank people, so. With that, we'll set, the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 18, 2020, at 4:00 PM at Elbow Mountain Elementary School, Elbow Mountain, Wyoming, no reason to change that at this point. As Dr. Copeland says, very likely that we may need a special meeting if if it is left up to the districts to make decisions based on what we hear this week, and we'll schedule that when we know something. There is no executive session needed at this time, so I therefore adjourn the meeting, thank you guys for attending, we'll see you later.
Thank you.
Bills Committee is Gaspari, George, and Boardman. Actually, just, Joe, you should have this and then say it, because I'm gonna forget it every time.
Good job, James, thanks.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
Bye.
Adios.